Every time I turn around and I look at this wreath and I think I need to find the history on it, and I can't seem to find the history, a woman made this wreath many, many years ago, right, Mr. Cordero?
Yes.
And I probably need to ask Mayor Lavenino because I remember him saying that, so I feel very remiss in not following up on that.
I think it has its own room, the story, Mayor, someplace. It's pretty good size.
It's very good size. That would be a big, big wreath box. So I am, I'm gonna make that my mission for this week, so I'll have that information for you for next year. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of December 15th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Moats.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
And Mayor Patino.
Here. Our first order of business is the retirement resolution, and Councilmember Moats will be making the presentation. He's on Zoom.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and also Chief Champion. He's not with us physically. He's with us in the remote location, and he'll be listening to his proclamation. Whereas Chief Champion has invested his entire career into the community where he grew up and attended local schools, then led the men, women, and professional staff of Santa Maria Fire Department with his calm demeanor and constant encouragement. And whereas Chief Champion is highly respected among his peers, is known for his ability to build relationships with other agencies, including emergency medical services, and help to shape and grow the department, and whereas during his career, the Santa Maria Fire Department grew from three fire stations to five, six counting the dedicated station at the Santa Maria Public Airport, and with the addition of the Second Response Unit at the Downtown Fire Station Number One in 2019. Also during his tenure, the Fire Department acquired the new tractor, drawn aerial truck in 2018. And whereas the Santa Maria Fire Department benefited greatly from key grants written by its staff and from both times that voters passed Measure U Local Sales Tax in 2012 and And whereas he was a Santa Barbara County Fire Chiefs Association President, a member of the City Slickers Taskmaster's Club, Santa Maria Men's Club, and the Santa Maria Breakfast Rotary, the best rotary club in Santa Maria.
Really?
Says that in the proclamation.
Let's vote on it. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California as follows. Fire Chief Leonard Champion is commended for his dedicated service and outstanding contributions to the Santa Maria community, and is also congratulated on his retirement, and he, his wife Melody, and their family are wished good health and many years of happiness in all their future endeavors. This was passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council held this day, the 15th of December, and signed by Mayor Alice Patino.
Okay, so I'm assuming that is your motion.
That is my motion, Madam.
I'll second that, Mayor.
I have a second. And the resolution honoring Leonard Champion for his years of service, any further discussion? Hearing none.
I would, I would say, Mayor, that I've worked with Leonard, met with Chief Champion for all of his career here, and he's always been a pleasure to work with, and I think that we're going to miss him as a chief and as an employee of the city of Santa Maria. And I thoroughly enjoyed working every bit of the time that we worked together.
Thank you. So Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye. So since we're, we are restricted who are able to attend this meeting due to the health orders, I believe that we have Chief Champion available for a few comments.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
You sure can.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Moats, and Council for the kind words and the proclamation. That really means a lot. Having joined the department in 1990, I feel extremely blessed to have found a profession that is so rewarding and fulfilling, and to do so in a community in which I was born is amazing. I'm fortunate to have worked at every rank in the organization and have learned so much and established many relationships that we'll continue to have beyond my time here. And for all these reasons, I'm grateful, and honestly couldn't have scripted it any better. What I want to focus on is what our mission statement begins with and has been my expectation of our members, which is the service. We are expected to provide the highest level of service to those we serve and to our community. That is why we are here, and that is why we exist, and that is what we excel at. And so it all begins with our screening, our hiring, the way we run our academies, and throughout our training. As chief, I occasionally receive unsolicited feedback from the public that validates that high level of service. And normally firefighters shy away from accolades and chalk it up to, you know, that's just our job. But when I make my rounds to visit fire stations, I will find numerous thank you cards that people have sent thanking them for making a difference in their life, and I wanted to share one of those thank you cards that I, I just picked up the other day. The card reads, "To the firefighters who saved my brother's life in the early morning hours of November 17, a sincere and heartfelt, heartfelt thank you. Seeing my brother lying on the floor barely breathing and for all appearances was dying was a horrific experience, one that still haunts me. The firefighters and EMTs swiftly came in and administered lifesaving CPR and heart fibrillation procedures, acted with efficiency, control, and expertise. I have never been more grateful for their dedication of EMT workers and their heroic efforts than at this, than at this moment when they were in the process of saving my brother's life. May God bless each of you and keep you safe and protected during these challenging times. You are all heroes in our eyes. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts." And then each family member sliding the card. That to me just captured what it is that we do and why we're here. And so you have an amazing group of men and women that do these types of things day in and day out, and I know you are just as proud of them as I am. I just want to say that you should be assured that you are in good hands with the staff that remains and will carry on that mission of service. And I want to give a heartfelt thank you to so many people for supporting me and influencing me throughout my career, but I know time is short, so I'm only gonna be able to focus on a few. To our staff, Tracy, Kristi, and Karina, for keeping me on course and keeping us afloat; to all of our command staff; our emergency services specialist Roy Dugger; and to all the department directors; to my parents for their support; and to my wife who has encouraged me at every possible turn and has been my biggest cheerleader of all; and finally, to Rick Hayden, Jason Stillwell, and to you, City Council, for your support over the years. You know, sometimes I think my job is difficult, but when I observe some of the issues you have to deal with and there is no win situation, I'm glad that I'm not in your shoes sometimes. But at the end of the day, we are blessed to serve, and what helps me through the difficult times is a little perspective, so I wanted to share with you someone who inspires me and gets me through those tough times. I think you all know Barbara Wiley. She's one of our Wreckin' Park staff, and she has three amazing daughters. And back in 2018, when we were doing Fill the Boot for Muscular Dystrophy, her daughter, Shelby, wrote this, and it's posted right next to my computer, and it, again, encourages me all the time. It reads, "I earned money, so I thought of Fill the Boot. I grabbed my boot and put all of it in there. I made $30.60. I'm happy. Love, Shelby." Shelby is my inspiration. I hope you have a Shelby in your life to get you through the tough times, and I just can't thank you enough for supporting me. It's just been, been unbelievable, so thank you.
Any, any comments from Councilmembers? Madam Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to just give my appreciation and thanks to Chief Champion for his years of service and for leading our Fire Department. It's been a pleasure working with you, and we just wish you the very best on your retirement. Thank you for your service.
Dr. Moats?
And I also wish to congratulate Chief Champion on his retirement. He's worked long and hard over many years, decades, at all levels of the Fire Department. He was universally liked. He was particularly liked at our Rotary Club. And I still have in my mind the costume he wore to the last Rotary Christmas party. I won't tell you about it. But congratulations, Chief Champion.
And Leonard, I certainly appreciate working with you all these years, and I've seen you go up through the ranks, and I'm very, very proud of what you've attained. I can remember doing that Fire Ops, I think it was 101, when we wore the turnouts and went into the burning buildings and experienced for a few minutes what, what life is like for our firefighters, and the leadership that you've shown, the new fire stations that got built, and so much under your leadership, and you just seem to do it with such great ease. So I say thank you. I'm sure we'll run into each other, and hopefully you'll stay active in the community that you love. Thank you. Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We do also, will present to Chief Champion a plaque that says, "With sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership, public service, and commitment to the Santa Maria Fire Department." So we want to recognize him for his service with this token of our appreciation. And just a few other words, as you've noted, we're very fortunate to have Leonard as chief. He's, his longevity is, you've all talked about that, but I'll mention the fact that his longevity goes back so far that he's, the office he's now in is where he went to kindergarten. So that was a school that's now the Fire Admin Building. So his longevity is, yeah, I don't, insurmountable, I would say. But his knowledge of the city is huge, knowledge of the community, and that's really has helped us with a lot of the things we've recognized that Chief Champion bringing to the city, such as intergovernmental cooperation, working with other agencies to improve regional fire service, and breaking down any other barriers that we had of being able to provide better service to the community in a more efficient and effective way. And, you know, some of the ways he's done that, we, we're able to complete the standard of coverage report, which really shows where our fire service needs to go in the future based on the call volume and the other demands for services we have. He's been great in being able to lead the effort in getting grants, including on our million-dollar fire truck, the, the ladder truck. He was able to bring in the deputy chief position, which is a key focus, not only for that particular position, helping with the operations, but also with Chief Champion's focus on succession planning and making sure that, as he mentioned, that the firefighters and the staff that we have are able to gain the experience to do not only their job, but the future jobs that the city will call on them to perform. And his communication with the staff as well, not just with the department, but he had, you know, effective communication with his captain meetings and the chief's bulletin and other ways that, you know, communication is really important with our staff, especially with the challenges we're going on now, and, and having that open communications paramount. So he's great to work with. We love him. We're gonna miss him, and we're fortunate to still have him in the community and seeing him around here, and we look forward to continuing to work with him in other roles.
Thank you. So thank you very much, Chief Champion, and best to you and your family.
Thank you.
Next, we have another retirement resolution, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a resolution number 2020-131, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California, commending Chief Police, Chief of Police Philip Hanson for over seven years of exemplary service with the City of Santa Maria. Whereas with 45 years of law enforcement experience, Chief Philip Hanson has led the men and women and professional staff of the Santa Maria Police Department with empathy, transparency, and fairness. And whereas Chief Hanson's significant accomplishments include utilizing his 20-plus years of tactical experience with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Special Enforcement Bureau, also known as SWAT, to shape and mold the culture and philosophy of the Santa Maria Police Department by emphasizing risk management and best practices. And whereas bringing the Los Flores Ranch Training Facility, the shooting range, to completion, introducing a local venue for the department's staff to enhance its training capabilities with the goal of increasing public safety, and whereas commissioning the Office of Independent Review, also known as OIR, to complete an audit of the police department's procedures and protocols to ensure best management practices are followed, while allowing transparency, and whereas during his tenure, the police department expanded its complement of sworn professional staff, increasing the number of detectives, implementing the special enforcement team, and developing a focused approach on enhancing the department's community-based policing by expanding our community partnership. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows. Police Chief Philip Hanson is commended for his dedicated service and outstanding contribution to the Santa Maria community, and is also congratulated on his retirement, and he and his wife Deborah and their family are wished good health and many years of happiness in all their future endeavors. Passed and adopted at the regular meeting of the Santa Maria City Council on the 15th day of December of 2020, and I make this in the form of a motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and for honoring Philip Hanson for his years of service. And any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye. I believe Chief Hanson has a few comments.
Of course, I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I will, I will make it brief. I know you've got a lot of work to do tonight. First, I'd like to add my congratulations to Leonard Champion, the Fire Chief. Wonderful man to work with and a true gentleman. And Leonard, if you're still listening, if you hadn't tuned out yet, congratulations, buddy. I want to thank you for the kind words on that proclamation. Don't give me too much credit here. This was a labor of love with me. When Chief Martin asked me to come up and help him out here, eight, almost eight years ago now, April 1st, it'd be eight years, I told him I'd give him two years. I didn't know how it was gonna work out, and I made a commitment of two years. I didn't know if they'd care for me up here or what I'd think of the whole deal, and I fell in love with the place, and I fell in love with the people I worked with there. And I'm, what I'm most proud of, forget any of those accomplishments or whatever, which are all team things on there, is the culture of service that our police department has. You've got a police department that's absolutely outstanding right now, and they have a culture of service. They know who they work for out there. They know that they work for the people in Santa Maria, that they work for this community, and that's who they answer to, and that's who they get their authority from. And I could not be more proud of the men and women, sworn and civilian, or what I call professional staff, that I, that I have the opportunity to work with every day, and they're doing a magnificent job for you during very difficult times, and it's been my honor to work with them. I mentioned the team effort. The thing about law enforcement, the thing about city government, but law enforcement, certainly in particular, it, there's a synergy. It has to have the support of the people that you police. The people of this community have been incredibly supportive of this department. This City Council has been absolutely wonderful. The city managers, both Mr. Stillwell and Mr. Hayden, have been fabulous, and no matter what issues could be happening up here with the City Council, and there could be disagreements on other things, you've always been 5-0 in your support of, of your employees here, and in particular, the police department, and I'm incredibly, incredibly grateful for that. I have a wonderful leadership team in place, leadership and supervision, that is ready to take this forward and take it to the next level. And that's part of the OIR report tonight, is to give us a report card, but also to give us a roadmap of what can we do even better, to get better and better over time, and you've got the people there in place to do that. Frankly, everybody asks me if I'm excited about leaving, and excitement is not the word. I am terrified because I love my job and I love my interactions with all of you and those wonderful people I mentioned that I work with, and, but it's time. You know when it's time, and I think a, a good leader knows when it's time to step aside and let his folks take over the wheel and, and take it to the next level, so we're there now. So thank you with all my heart to all of you and to this wonderful community for your support.
Thank you.
Chief, there is one thing, and that is that I didn't get an opportunity to work for you, so I really wish I could.
Thank you. I made sure to get that signed.
Yes.
I'll take it with that. Thank you.
Any comments from Councilmembers? Dr. Moats?
In order for our police department to be outstanding as ours is, it has to have outstanding leadership. And I think Chief Hanson, you are an outstanding leader. I thoroughly enjoyed having you as the department head for our police department. I think you've done a great job, and I wish you the best in the future.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I feel uniquely qualified to say that I've seen the pendulum swing in both directions, the highest and the lowest of morale. I don't know that it's ever been any higher than it is today. It's been an honor to work with this man. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam. Chief Hanson, thank you for your years of service here at the City of Santa Maria. I, I know that you and I only worked for a brief, a brief period of that time, and I have to say that I really enjoyed getting to know you, getting to know the department, and I just wholeheartedly want to say that I really appreciated working with you, and I wish you nothing but to pass down your retirement. Congratulations, and again, thank you for serving the residents of Santa Maria.
And I would like to say thank you very much. As with Mr. Cordero, we've, we've seen what, what's happened here in Santa Maria, and it's almost like a, it's such like, so far in the past, it's, because we have such a great police department, it's, it's really almost difficult to remember some of that stuff, but I'm so glad that you came up here and you decided to give us more time than you had planned initially, and you have a lovely wife. And that's part of it, is, is having a wife that's gonna support you and say, yeah, we're, you know, we're gonna move. I thank you for, very much for your leadership, and the people of Santa Maria benefit from your years of knowledge, your professionalism. And I know sometimes when I have questioned you on something, on something, and I know nothing about police work, and you've always given me the right answer. And, and so I appreciate that, and I appreciate working with you and getting together, we have our little meetings and talk about what was going on in Santa Maria, and the calmness that you always, you always had. When Miss, maybe Miss Waterfield and I were getting a little excited about something that was going on, you were always so calm, and we had tried to say, how come he's so calm about this when we are so excited? But I really want to thank you, and I sincerely mean it. We have benefited from you. So give my best to your wife and have a great retirement. Thank you. Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yeah, everything you said is right on. It's been an honor to be able to work with Chief Hanson. I also have a plaque for him commending his outstanding leadership, public service, and steadfast commitment in transforming the Santa Maria Police Department. And to expand on that a bit, you know, a steady hand was required five years ago when we embarked on the improvements and the turnaround of the police department. And, you know, Phil Hanson, Chief Hanson, provided great leadership in a way that resonates both with the men and women in the police department as, but also as a member on our executive team. He makes our, makes the city stronger by being here, not just in the department, but for the city as a whole. And, you know, his steady leadership proved instrumental, especially in 2020 here, where we had the pandemic, sharp budget impacts, and civil discourse. So I want to also join the council in thanking him for being here and for his service to the law, law enforcement profession, both here and his time before. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Next, we have another retirement resolution, and Councilmember Soto will be making that
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This resolution is in honor of Transit Service Manager Austin Odell for his years of outstanding service to the City of Santa Maria, and congratulating him on his retirement. Whereas Austin Odell has been employed by and has faithfully served the City of Santa Maria as Transit Service Manager since December 11th, 2006. And whereas Austin Odell oversaw the growth of the Santa Maria Area Transit, SMAT, into a regional transit leader connecting Sinai NS, Lompoc, Beelton, and Cuyama communities to essential services in Santa Maria. And whereas since, and whereas since 2006, SMAT's service has doubled in size from 500,000 to over 1 million revenue miles per year, improving the convenience, mobility, and accessibility for customers. And whereas, as a skilled grant administrator and writer, Austin Odell managed over 130 million in state and federal funds over his career, and secured over 21 million in competitive grants for the benefit of the community. And whereas Austin Odell has been recognized for his technical expertise by transit peers by serving on the California Transit Association Board of Directors for six years, and whereas the chair of the Small Operators Committee for four years. And whereas Transit Service Manager Austin Odell will retire from city service on December 18th, 2020. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, Calif, the City of Santa Maria, California as follows. Transit Service Manager Austin Odell is commended for his faithful, distinguished, and devoted service to the community, is congratulated on his retirement, and the city wishes Austin and his family many years of happiness. Thank you. I make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, honoring Austin Odell for his years of service. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye. Mr. Stillwell?
I think you have Austin on Zoom.
What? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Odell.
That's okay. We have both the video, but we also have Austin on Zoom.
Okay. When I don't see the body out there, it's hard to remember that they're zoomed in.
We'll start with the video.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm going to thank you for the opportunity for being working for the City of Santa Maria. I believe we've accomplished a lot. We have a new transit center. We replaced the fleet, and we have a lot more projects that are coming around the corner. We have a fabulous team to work with in leadership, and as far as the Department of Public Works and the Transit Division. We have excellent individuals and employees who want to do a great job and really want to provide excellent customer service and excellent service for the city. And again, thank you for the opportunity for working for our great city.
Is he on there?
He is, but he's not prepared to speak, so.
Oh, he's not? Okay. So.
Oh, he's not? Okay. So, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to say something?
Yeah, so the Transit Manager, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, it's a nice honor to be able to recognize Austin Odell and his service to the city and to transit profession in general. Because the Transit Manager job is a technical job, as you've heard a little bit there, you know, operating the Santa Maria area transit bus line, managing federal grants and federal funding requirements, working with our regional partners to both spread our service into the regional bus line, managing the operating agreements. We completed an RFP process to bring in a new bus management company. And so just, there's a lot of technical behind the scenes work that goes into operating a bus line. And as Austin touched on, some of the, you know, he was instrumental in some of the big accomplishments we've had while he's been here with the new Transit Center, working on regionalism with RTA and our other regional partners to the south, completing the short-range transit plan. And really, he's set us up for the future of the Santa Maria area transit with continuing to be a well-respected bus line for federal funding, which is allowing us to be able to electrify our buses. So we're going to have electric buses here before too long. We're going to have more partnerships with Hancock College, including they're looking at putting another transit center on their campus and having their students better access bus passes. He's worked to lay the groundwork for automation of our bus services, both with more information for the bus riders, understanding where buses are and when, so which will save time for people to wait at a bus stop, as well as easier payments for people. So you don't have to either pay with cash or pay with a card. So, yeah, and as mentioned, he's well-regarded in his profession, and he's sought out statewide for leadership opportunities and leadership insight into transit operations. So thank you, Austin, for your service to Santa Maria.
Thank you. And I know, sitting on the board for SB CAG, Austin purchased buses from, I can't remember where, up in the valley someplace, and we got them, which saved SB CAG a lot of money. Also, to figure out the transit needs, not just in Santa Maria, but to Bulton, to Lompoc, to Vandenberg, Solvang, is really, really a tremendous feat. And when I've gone to the meetings on unmet needs, and those needs change from year to year as to what's going on, and people can express the needs that they have and the kinds of transportation that they need to have. And he figures it out and he gets it done. So I think it's, I think it's really, he's very quiet, does it under the radar, and has done such a great job for the City of Santa Maria and the residents of Santa Maria, and actually the whole region. So I say thank you, Austin, and enjoy your retirement.
The next item of business is the certification of the canvas of the general municipal election. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive the certification of the 2020 General Presidential Municipal Election by the County Clerk Recorder, declare the results, and follow standard procedures to reorganize the City Council.
Okay. And is that all of your report there? Okay. Oh, she's giving the report. Okay. Boy, I tell you, when you don't have a body out there, it's hard to, you know. Okay, the staff report is to be given by our Chief Deputy City Clerk, Ms. White.
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. On November 3, the City of Santa Maria held this general municipal election, electing the mayor at large and members of the City Council in each of the newly formed Districts 1 and 2. Additionally, voters elected its city treasurer and city clerk at large. This election was conducted with the statewide presidential election conducted by the County of Santa Barbara. The County Clerk Recorder had 30 days following the election to complete the ballot count and certify the election results. The results were certified on November 25, and the City Clerk's office received the results via email. The certified election results confirm that Alice Patino was reelected as mayor, Carlos Escobedo was elected as City Council, to the City Council in the newly formed District 1, and Mike Cordero was reelected to the City Council to serve the newly formed District 2. Each of them will serve a four-year term. Additionally, election results confirm that Teresa Hall was reelected as city treasurer, and Patty Rodriguez was reelected as city clerk, both to serve four-year terms. The City Council must adopt a resolution accepting the County Clerk Recorder's certification of the election prior to the installation of the newly elected officers. The resolution is before the City Council this evening for approval. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
Slow move, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a couple of seconds. So, any further discussion? Hearing nun, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carries. So the certification is complete. And now, I will begin the process of organizing the City Council. But first, I would like to read and present a proclamation to our outgoing council member, Dr. Moats. Whereas, Dr. Michael Moats has been a valuable member of the City Council since November 2016, and as a 42-year resident of the City of Santa Maria, has consistently been a contributor to the community. And whereas, Dr. Moats was appointed to the Santa Maria City Planning Commission in 2006, reappointed in 2009, and served for a total of seven years, including one year as Chair in 2009. And whereas, among his involvement while on the City Council, were the transitions to district-based council elections, the voter renewal and enhancement of local Measure U sales tax, housing-related issues, serving on both the Santa Maria Public Airport Committee and the Quarterly Schools Committee, and was influential, influential in the AT Steel University of Health Science decision to choose Santa Maria for the West Coast Campus. And whereas, Dr. Moats' list of community service ranges from being a member of the Board of Directors and founder of the Community Bank of Santa Maria, member and past president of the Santa Maria Newtime Kiwanis Club, member of Santa Maria Breakfast Rotary, so he has dual citizenship in those, and member of the medical staff of Marion Regional Medical Center, member of the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, and member of the Santa Maria Elks Lodge 1538. Now, therefore, I, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaim that Dr. Michael Moats is hereby recognized for his service and dedication to the residents of the Santa Maria Valley, and the city wishes him and his family well in their future endeavors. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and have the seal of the, cause the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed heretofore this 15th day of December, 2020. And Dr. Moats, do you have any comments?
Well, my first comment is that I don't have to go to Michael's and get a frame for this. I can just put it on the wall.
They didn't tell you that you have to get the frame back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to thank you and my fellow council persons and the executive staff for your support in helping me over the last four years attempt to govern the city of Santa Maria. And, you know, four years has passed so quickly. I can remember being at the ladies lounge at the Elk Club when you were elected, and I was too. And much to my surprise, so was Donald Trump. So Donald Trump and I came in together and were leaving together, although I'm a lot easier to leave the office than Mr. Trump. And of course, we had, we had districting, not redistricting, but for the first time. And due to the 2018 elections, I have the distinction of being the longest-serving lame duck in the history of Santa Maria. I have the experience of running for public office twice, and once citywide and one district-wide. And it's a whole lot easier to get elected, or at least the amount of energy one puts into it, it's much easier in a district. It's really hard to run for a citywide office. The city's a big place, and I commend you for doing that. It takes a lot of energy and time to fund a campaign, walk your district, attend all the candidate forums, do media advertising. And my congratulations to all those people who entered the arena as a candidate for public office. And I especially want to congratulate Councilwoman Gloria Soto, who ran a very well-organized and successful campaign for the 3rd District in 2018. So in reviewing my four years, sitting here on the dais most of the time, and some of the time where Councilman Cordero is sitting, I'm glad that I get to sit here on the last meeting. I remember specifically certain events that happened. And the first one was the act of districting the city. This was quite controversial and was kind of forced on us by a lawsuit that it looked like we couldn't win if we didn't district. This was a contentious issue, and it was not a unanimous vote. In fact, I remember you, Madam Mayor, voting against it. But we all decided to go through the rigmarole of multiple community meetings in large venues outside of the council chambers to get everybody's input. Got some interesting ideas of expanding the council from five people to seven or nine, or I think Bob O'Rourke had a huge number of people. I don't know how we were all going to sit around here. But we finally arrived at a suitable districts, four of them, which I voted against, by the way. I think I lost that one 4 to 1. But the new council, starting in 2020, is charged with doing that whole thing all over again. Because with the census of 2020, we'll get the results, and you'll be charged with, again, trying to create four new districts. Good luck. One thing we spent a lot of time on, too, was rent control for our senior citizens living in manufactured homes. This was another contentious issue where we had multiple residents of the mobile home parks at every city council meeting, at open session, get up and tell us how rapacious the park owners are. And after many, many meetings, we finally came to a consensus that I think everybody seemed to accept. Because I haven't noticed anybody at the speaker over there complaining about rents anymore with our model lease agreement. So I thought that was good. I thought the most contentious issue was the H2A farm worker housing, where we had concern by people that lived in R1 housing that their next-door neighbor would have 16 people living. And I thought we made some good decisions on that, and we protected the, shall I say, sanctity of R1 housing to be single-family, while allowing the H2A workers to be housed in anything zoned R2 or R3. And that seemed to be a good compromise and pleased almost everyone. It's good to please almost everyone. In dealing with the ever-present financial strain on our city's finances caused by our required contributions to CalPERS and the ever-escalating demands of funding pension plans, this became a real problem. The amounts that were owed to CalPERS threatened funding for the regular city services by creating a structural budget deficit. And I heard that, those words used many times, structural budget deficit. But fortunately, this condition was in part improved greatly by all the work of the executive staff in getting our Measure U passed, which funded our first responders with a little bit left over for other city events. So I want to give kudos to the hard work of our executive staff in convincing our citizens to vote with actually such a huge majority in favor of a tax increase. And I wanted to notice that, note that this is the first tax increase that I have ever voted for, and I was quite pleased that it passed. Another great success of our city council over the four years I was here was in selecting a new city manager and a new city attorney. And I think we did a great job and have wonderful person, first people to fill those two spots, Mr. Watson and Mr. Stillwell. Of course, we can't leave the interesting things that happened in the city council during my tenure without talking about the COVID-19 pandemic and its effect on the city and the city council. In addition to the horrendous health effects on our city, we also had all the problems with our local small businesses having to go through periods of shutdown, reopening, shutdown. I'm not sure how many of the businesses will recover, but I think we need to remember and give credit to Glenn Morris and our Chamber of Commerce for striving to make things as easy as possible for our business community. Our sales tax and hotel taxes were projected to catastrophically fall and cause more difficulty with our city financing. And I know that became quite an issue for our city manager. How are we going to make our way out of this deep hole? But Santa Maria is a resilient city. I think it's bounced back better than it was expected to. The funding, although it's not what we hoped, it's not the dire prospects that we feared. As far as the city council goes, we no longer were able to meet in public. And I remember when all those pews would be filled with people, and people would just be itching to get up and talk in public session, and sometimes tell us that we weren't doing such a good job, but we all the time knew that we were doing well. One thing that I remember is the fact that the back of the room's dark. Turn the lights off. But it creates a more intimate atmosphere for us to ponder over these important city issues. And I really enjoyed the fact that we actually got to meet together in person. So I was talking to Tim Seifert, and he was telling me that the Planning Commission meets on Zoom. And that wouldn't be any fun. So I'm really glad we were able to keep our personal contact with each other. I'd like to recognize and talk about some of the individuals that have been very helpful to me during my four years. And first is our city manager, Jason Stillwell. And Mr. Stillwell and I met regularly over the course of years. And we discussed the city council agendas. And he always tried to educate us on all of the things that would come before us, whether they were agendized items, or whether they were on the consent calendar. I know sometimes as a city councilperson, you put a lot of emphasis on, you know, the controversial items and kind of forget about the other consent calendar items. But sometimes those can be important, too. Jason was never judgmental. He was always very calm, like our chief of police. Though the issues were contentious, he never really tried to lead me down any path or suggest for me how to vote. He always left it up to me and the other councilpersons. And he said that, "I'll get done whatever three people tell me to do." I think Mr. Stillwell's done a great job for the city of Santa Maria. I very much appreciate working with you. Next, Mayor Alice Tino, who is starting her third term as mayor, very deservedly so. You are the face of the city of Santa Maria. No elected official, in my opinion, has ever worked as hard as you do to try and make Santa Maria a better place to work and live in. You attend innumerable conferences, meetings, public events, forums, and at the same time have personal interaction with the kids in Santa Maria, taking them off to field trips to universities, try and show them how to be a better life and, you know, get a college degree. Also, you run a great city council meeting. And you're the final one to vote. And, you know, that's a tough job, a 2 to 2 vote. But I think the city's very lucky to have you at the helm. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Next on my hit list is Etta, who's not here. I've known Etta Waterfield probably longer than any other member, you know, on the dais or even the city staff. We met as members of the Planning Commission 15 years ago. Etta is a straightforward advocate for free enterprise and supports the small businesses of our community. She wants to make Santa Maria more business-friendly. Another term I've heard very often, "business-friendly," to encourage building up our local economy and bringing jobs and prosperity to our city. She's our watchdog over what she calls heavy-handed government regulations. And she was a great supporter of our police department. I think she was the executive director of the Police Council. And when the city budget couldn't come up with some of the items that police needed to enforce the public good, they were purchased by the council. And she was involved in lots of fundraisers, for those all of which I went to. And Mike Cordero, a decades-long servant of the city of Santa Maria, a full career in the Santa Maria Police Department, and many, many years on the city council. And Mike brings with him an institutional knowledge of our city, both law enforcement and the needs of our community. He's practical in his decision-making from his experiences in dealing with the public, both in law enforcement and as a city official. And he was so popular that nobody would run against him for the 2nd district. So you got that lucky opportunity to glide right in there and got 97% of the vote, I think. I didn't even know that they were going to put your name on the ballot. But congratulations on your reelection to the city council. Be good to have you on for the next four years. I'll read about you in the paper. And Gloria Soto, our newest and youngest councilpersons, I think. I'm not sure who's younger, Carlos or Gloria, but you're both very young. You know?
Thanks for not asking.
Being old, I've come to appreciate how good it is to be young. Nothing aches, or shouldn't. But Gloria was elected as an advocate for many of the people in our city whose voices have not been adequately heard. She's become the moral compass for the many Sanitarians who are economically and socially disadvantaged. Her advocacy for healthcare, recreation, and opportunity for all Sanitarians is noted and appreciated. She's also a very skillful orator at rallies and public events, such as when we had our Black Lives Rally out in front. I thought you gave a powerful speech. I thought you did, too. I think you will be a voice to be reckoned with for many years into the future, and I wish you a great career in public service. I'd also like to thank the other people who've helped me, including City Attorney Tom Watson, Chief Phil Hanson, Fire Chief Leonard, and the other department heads. And I'd like to thank Tony and Diana from the city manager's office, who kind of nursed me along, got me coffee and pretzels. I also want to give thanks to past city manager Rick Hayden, who introduced me to city governance, and I thought he was also a fine leader. Next, I'd like to welcome Carlos Escobedo. Where'd he go? Okay. I guess you hold off on that part. You've got 30 seconds. I know it's always a little intimidating to be the new kid on the block. But I'm sure he'll do a good job. He put in a lot of effort on his campaign. I think he knocked on more doors than there are doors to be knocked on in the 1st district. He has huge energy, and I wish him the best for the next four years as well. Finally, I'd like to say that I've truly enjoyed my four years on the city council. I've really enjoyed the friendships that I've made, and I've almost come to regard the council and the city managers sort of extended family. And I really enjoy being around all of you. I want to thank you very much. Four years ago, when I took the oath of office, my good friend Bob O'Rourke was in my position right now. And after 20 years of being on the city council, he gave a nice speech, and I remember his final words. And I've been thinking about these final words now for two years. And so I'm going to repeat them. And now, my wife and I are off to have dinner at Shaw's. And I was planning on Shaw's actually being open. So my wife went to get takeout, and when I leave the dais, I'm going to go home and have Shaw's food. And I wish to thank everybody, wish you a good evening. I was planning on leaving, but I decided I want to watch Carlos take the oath. So, thank you all very much.
Comments from council members?
Madam Mayor, I made my comments at the last meeting, and I think you realize that I'll miss the working with you. And now that we don't have that doggone brown act in our way, maybe we can have a little dinner.
Yeah.
At Shaw's.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you. Dr. Moats, I can't even begin to express my appreciation for you and your service. And, you know, it's so interesting coming in as a new council member and not really knowing, you know, how to tread or how you're going to work with your new colleagues. But I have to say that it's been such a joy being able to work alongside you. I've learned tremendously from you, and I can't begin to even tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you picked up the phone every time I called, or you would call me back as soon as you could. And I know that, you know, again, as someone who was new to this job, I really appreciated being able to bounce ideas off of you. Even though we didn't always agree, you always give me a different perspective. And I just, I really admire your service to our community, and I am so deeply appreciative of you and for having the opportunity to getting to know you on a more personal note. So, thank you.
And Dr. Moats, I really thank you for your service. I know that your service on the Planning Commission only added to the knowledge that you brought to the city council. It's such a great background, and when you don't have it, you realize what a great background that is to have on the Planning Commission and to have to make decisions that we're faced with here. If the Planning Commission decides to chicken out on what they're supposed to do, then it comes to us. And I appreciate always that the way you looked into every issue and subject that we would discuss. And as Ms. Soto said, "a different perspective," so many times. And that's what I think it's all about when you've got five people up here. You should have five different perspectives. You should have five different ways of looking at an issue. Your professionalism as a council, it's, you know, I've seen the way other councils operate, and I just hope that that never gets to the point where we do that here. And you have added so much, you've added just so much to our council. Great sense of humor. I'm sure your wife is going to want to have you back home, so you're not out, or maybe not, on the first and third Tuesdays of the month, Susan. But thank you for your service, and I know you're not going to quit serving the community. And I don't think people realize, because you do it in a very quiet way, through Kiwanis, through Rotary and other organizations, how much you serve the community, how much you give back to the community and give to our youth, which is so important. It's very important to me. And how much you really give to the youth, because they are important. I say thank you. And Ms. Waterfield couldn't be here tonight, and so she said, "Will you say a few words for me?" So I'm going to say that also is for Ms. Waterfield. I know she enjoyed serving on the Planning Commission with you also. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So I'd like to take a short recess at this time, so Councilmember Moats can step down, and then we will proceed with the oath of offices.
Ms. Clary, administer my oath of office.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Then we will have the oath of office for Councilmember Cordero.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And now for our newest member, Mr. Carlos Escobedo.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Joseph, you can sit up here and... So I will ask each one of our newly elected members to say a few words. Mr. Cordero, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to thank the members of the community, the citizens, for electing me for another four years of this. I can't help but not mention the councilpeople of the past and how much we all stand on the shoulders of those men and women that have been here before us. And I think of people like Tori Yoshi and Bob Orak and Joseph Tenno and the Tunnels and just so many, many other people that...
Too many to mention. And without the wisdom of those fine people, we wouldn't have the opportunity to work with what we're working with. And I was talking to someone here recently suggesting that things are going to be bad at best from the financial standpoint of what we're dealing with, but they're a long ways from terrible that some communities are in. And we have our past to thank for that. We have our councilpeople of the past and we can't forget the contribution that they made to allow us to do the job that we're doing. And I feel honored to be here. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you and we feel honored to have you here, Mr. Cordero. Mr. Escobedo, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Santa Maria, District 1, we made it happen. Mayor, City Council members, and everybody who's watching us through any of the digital platforms, este discurso lo repetiré en español. First, I would like to recognize outgoing City Councilmember Moats, Chief Champion, Chief Hanson, for your support and service to our community. Thank you so much. I want to thank the support that I received during this campaign and the trust, the effort, and all the energy that everybody who was part of it, so I can be here sitting representing District 1 in our City Council. Thank you so much. It has been a difficult year. COVID has affected our lives in every single way and from the bottom of my heart, my respect to the memory of those who are no longer with us and my condolences to the families who have lost a loved one. Like a big part of our community, I'm a product of the American dream. My family and I came all the way from San Martín Didalgo Jalisco with a bag full of hopes and dreams. And like all of you, I work hard every day to make of Santa Maria a better place for all of us. Two years ago, a little bit more than two years ago, I became U.S. citizen and it was one of the most important days for me and my family. I remember being down in L.A. and the judge told us something that I will never forget. He said, "Congratulations, you're a U.S. citizen, but now you have to make a really important decision. You can either be another one and survive or you can give back to this country that had welcomed you." Right there, I registered to vote. And the following year, I decided to run for City Council because I want to give more to our community. I want to be an agent of change. During this campaign, I have been able to see the contrast in our neighborhoods. I have listened to the concerns and aspirations of our community, but I also have seen the great potential that Santa Maria has. I felt firsthand their warmth and solidarity. Because when you see the results in the election or when you walk on the streets, I don't see numbers, but people. People with a unique story to share, like Esteban, a small business owner who feels like downtown is forgotten. He and many other small business owners have been struggling even before the pandemic started. Or Toni, who doesn't feel comfortable taking her family to the riverbed because she doesn't feel comfortable anymore. Or Yolanda, a single mom of two, who works all day to provide to her family but who's also worried that her family, her kids, do not have access to the activities and education and opportunities. I remember that after hours and hours of walking under the discouraging sun, there were times when my body asked me to give up. This is too much. By the trust and support of our community pushed me to keep moving forward. I keep in my heart that every single day I walk, somebody either gave me a bottle of water, some fruit, even one day I ended up being invited to a barbecue that Hernandez's family put together to watch the Dodgers championship. By the way, congratulations to the Dodgers and Dodgers fans. I want to share some of the lessons I learned in this process. One, the campaign is over and now it's time to move on. Second, in politics, nothing is personal. Third, we need to listen to our community because we, as public servants, we own this position to them. And the fourth and the most important one, the power lies with the people. And the people are losing faith in the national and state politics for all this drama and we should not let that happen here in the local arena. I come before you as an independent City Councilmember. I'm not controlled by any political party, interest group, or community organization. And as votes come before me, my guiding principle will be to do what's the best for the city of Santa Maria and especially the forgotten District 1. Mayor and City Councilmembers, District 1 residents sent me with a lot of requests. Here are some of them. So, city residents in District 1 wants to be able to walk in their neighborhoods, go to their parks feeling safe. We need to better address the increasing number of homeless living in public places. We need more affordable housing. Our families need more educational activities for them. Our businesses need our support. And I know I cannot make this happen without your support. I also know that we'll not be always agreeing. We will disagree, but I hope we can do it in a credible manner because people are tired of politics as usual. They want, they're more interested in finding solutions to the problems that affect their daily lives. To conclude my speech, I would like to congratulate and acknowledge the work done by the other candidates in this race. I know that the driving force was to provide a better city for their families, for our families, and therefore I invite them and everybody to work as a team because together we can make of Santa Maria a better place to live.
Thank you very much, Mr. Escobedo. That's quite a stack. We'll get through it. The council will get through all those. Thank you.
No, Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't say any Spanish.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Ciudad de Santa María, Distrito 1, lo logramos. Alcaldeza de la ciudad, consejeros y todos los que nos están viendo por las redes o por alguna plataforma. Primero me gustaría felicitar y reconocer al consejero saliente Moats, al jefe de policía Hanson, al jefe de bomberos Champion, por su trabajo para servir nuestra ciudad. Muchas gracias. También quiero agradecer el apoyo que recibí durante esta campaña a todos los que fueron parte de la misma y que me permitieron llegar aquí y ser representante del Distrito 1. Gracias por todo el sacrificio, la energía y la confianza. Ha sido un año difícil. Coronavirus nos ha afectado en cada una de las áreas de nuestras vidas y desde el fondo de mi corazón leí mis respetos a la memoria de aquellos que se han ido y también mis condolencias a las familias que han perdido a un ser amado. Como gran parte de nuestra comunidad, soy producto del sueño americano. Mi familia y yo nos mudamos desde San Martín Didalgo Jalisco con una maleta llena de sueños e ilusiones. Santa María se volvió nuestro hogar y como todos ustedes trabajo todos los días para hacer de ella un mejor lugar para todos nosotros. Hace dos años tuve el honor de volverme ciudadano norteamericano y ha sido uno de los eventos más importantes para mí y para toda mi familia. Estábamos en la ceremonia y nunca se me olvidará lo que dijo el juez. Felicidades, son ciudadanos, pero ahora deben de tomar una decisión muy importante. O pueden ser uno más o pueden retribuir a este país que les ha recibido con los brazos abiertos. En ese momento me registré para votar. Me registré para votar porque quiero darle más a mi comunidad y ahora como City Council, quiero trabajar todavía mucho más. Quiero ser un agente de cambio. Durante la campaña me tocó ver los diferentes contrastes de nuestro distrito. Me tocó ver, escuchar de primera mano las necesidades y los problemas que atraviesa nuestra comunidad, pero también me tocó ver y sentir el gran potencial que tiene Santa María, la solidaridad, el cariño que le tenemos a nuestra ciudad. Porque cuando veo los números, cuando camino, yo no veo números, no veo los resultados sino a las personas. Y cada una de las personas tiene, tenemos una historia en particular y única, como es Esteban, dueño de negocios, que siente que el centro de la ciudad está olvidado. Él y muchos otros negocios han estado sufriendo incluso antes de la pandemia. O Toni, que no se siente a gusto llevar a su familia a caminar por el río. Yolanda, madre soltera de dos hijos, que trabaja todo el día para proveerle a su familia, pero que también se siente preocupada porque quiere que sus hijos tengan más oportunidades, más actividades educativas, culturales y físicas. Recuerdo que después de horas y horas de trabajar, de caminar, había momentos en los que me quedaba muy cansado. Estaba muy, muy cansado y quería por un momento mi cuerpo renunciar, pero no lo hice porque el apoyo y la confianza de la comunidad me empujó para adelante. Guardo en mi corazón cómo cada vez que salía alguien me regalaba una manzana o un agua. Incluso en una ocasión, la familia Hernández me invitó a su fiesta, a su barbecue, para ver el partido donde se coronó los Dodgers. Felicidades, por cierto, a todos los fans y al equipo. Y me gustaría compartir con ustedes algunas de los aprendizajes que tuve durante este proceso. El primero, la campaña se acabó y es momento de avanzar. Segundo, en la política nada es personal. Tercero, necesitamos, debemos escuchar nuestra comunidad porque nosotros como representantes les debemos este puesto a ellos. Y la cuarta y la más importante, el poder se encuentra y reside en el pueblo. Y la comunidad ha estado perdiendo la fe en la política tanto nacional como estatal y no debemos de permitir que eso suceda en el arena local. Vengo ante ustedes como un representante independiente, no soy controlado por ningún partido político, organización o grupo de interés porque mi valor rector en la toma de decisiones será lo mejor para Santa María y en particular para el olvidado Distrito Alcaldeza y representantes de la ciudad, el Distrito 1 me ha enviado con muchísimas, muchas solicitudes. La residente de Distrito 1 quiere poder caminar por sus vecindarios, quien podía ir a los parques y sentirse seguros. Necesitamos abordar el tema de las personas que viven en la calle, que poco a poco va aumentando. También nuestras familias necesitan actividades recreativas y culturales. Nuestros negocios necesitan de nuestro apoyo. Y sé que ninguno de esto puedo lograr sin el apoyo de ustedes. También sé que no vamos a estar de acuerdo todo el tiempo, pero espero que podamos... pero espero que podamos trabajar de manera respetuosa. Porque la comunidad está cansada de la política de siempre y quieren soluciones a los problemas normales, los problemas del día a día. Y para finalizar este discurso, me gustaría felicitar y reconocer el esfuerzo de todos los candidatos que estuvieron en esta contienda. Sé que la razón de la misma fue para ayudar a que nuestra comunidad sea un mejor lugar para nuestras familias y mejorar la ciudad. Es por ello que aprovecho este medio para invitarles a ellos y a todos los que nos están viendo, todos los que estamos aquí, a que trabajemos juntos. Porque juntos haremos que Santa María sea un lugar mejor para nuestras familias.
Thank you, thank you. So, I would like to say thank you to all the people of Santa Maria. Thank you for having the confidence in voting for me again. As Chief Hanson was saying, this is a team effort. Sometimes, you know, I get credit for things I have not done, just Alice. And when I see Ms. Soto, Mr. Cordero, Ms. Waterfield and Dr. Moats, it's because we have made decisions together that caused the city of Santa Maria to move forward. We have great department heads. We have employees that make us look great. And it's funny because people will call me and they think I have more authority than I do. They think that I should stop all these people from driving around because we're going through the COVID thing. I should make them stay home. And so, like I said, some people think I have more authority. And I don't have a magic wand. There are days I wish I did. We're going through this COVID crisis right now. We have issues ahead of us. We have got to get through this and I'm sure we will. And during this time, though, it's been very difficult because everything changes. I would announce on the radio that something was going on and by the time I got off the program, the whole protocol had changed. So, it's a first time for all of us. But we are, as Mr. Escobedo said, working together. We can make it through this. We have the issue, I think, which is really important, is getting our economy back on its feet and really supporting small businesses. They need our support in every single way possible. And I know we have written letters to the governor so that we are taken out of the region with the southern part of the state. We should not be in with them. We don't have the COVID numbers and we don't have the numbers in the hospital and ICU. And so, we in Santa Barbara County and San Luis Obispo County should be separate from the southern part of the state. We also have demands on housing that is, it's been ongoing, but it is increasing. And those are issues that we need to meet and we need to deal with. I always want to thank the people in Santa Maria also for voting for Measure U for our first responders. That was probably the most important vote that I think the people in this city have ever voted for. And as Dr. Moats said, that was the first time he has voted for a tax increase. That is the second time I voted because I voted for the first Measure U. And I think we realize the state isn't going to do it for us. We have to do it for ourselves and we have to protect the monies that come to the city of Santa Maria because we know best how to use them. I think this is interesting. This is the second time that we've had district elections. And I know at the beginning of all this, we decided as a council that you run in your district, representing your district, but we govern as a whole body and working together. And we've got, like I said, unique issues ahead of us coming off the COVID and it's nothing that we cannot work our way through. People have always asked me about the greatest asset that the city of Santa Maria has and I always say it's people. We have wonderful people. We have giving people. We have people that truly want to work together. So again, I say thank you to all of you. And we will continue to work together and make Santa Maria a great place to live. So, thank you. So, I would like to continue a request for a roll call because now we have a new city council.
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield and Mayor Patino.
Aye. Our next item is a presentation of 2020 Lights. You know what I was going to say. I'm sorry. We opened up Russell Park last week and I know all of the council members were there and it was really great. And like Mr. Escobedo said, talking to the people around there, they want to keep it looking nice. They want to keep it as a safe park. Kids were enjoying themselves. Many of the parents and grandparents that lived in that area came and expressed those issues to me that they really want to keep the park nice. And I gave them Mr. Posada's phone number so that anytime they see anything going on, they can call Mr. Posada and we can get it handled. Because we need to keep that park nice for the people and the kids in that community. Okay, so, moving on to our next item is the presentation of the 2020 Lights Sites and Holiday Nights. And staff report is to be given by Recreation Services Manager, Mr. Smitherman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for having me. The city of Santa Maria Recreation Parks Department, the Recreation Parks Commission and our sponsors, the People for Leisure Youth, would like to award the 24th Annual Lights Night Sites and Holiday Nights Holiday Decorating Contest winners. We had five categories this year. Country Christmas, Homespun Holiday, California Dreamin', Best Decorated Rookie and Holiday Hall of Fame. The purpose of this contest, of course, is to spread holiday cheer and bring joy to the residents and visitors of Santa Maria. This year, we had more nominations than ever, an increase of more than 100% over the same time last year, which made it very difficult for our Recreation Park Commissioners, Eliana Velasco and Rebecca Carey, to make the final decision on who the winner should be. So, we will present to you tonight a short video. It is a quick video and what I mean by that is it is a ride. So buckle up and we will share that presentation with you momentarily. So, as you can see, the holiday spirit is alive and well here in Santa Maria. Our judges did an amazing job. Thank you to Rebecca Carey and Eliana Velasco for spending more than four hours out there driving around, looking at all these beautiful lights. Each of our winners will receive a plaque and a yard sign and our honorable mentions will also receive a yard sign. I want to thank all those people who nominated their neighbors and friends and those people down the street by sending in pictures to our Recom Parks website and really appreciate all the effort that Santa Maria does to make Santa Maria such a beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smitherman. It's really nice when we can have the people here and see the ones that, especially when they have kids in their family that have helped put all these lights together and decorate their house because it's been so great for them. It's really neat when we can have them here at the council meeting. But unfortunately, not this year, but next year. Thank you very much. Next order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. Madam Mayor, staff received written comments this evening, I should mention that first, from Kena Monet, Hazel Davalos, Rebecca Garcia, Lauren Wanless, asking that the next police chief be hired through a transparent process utilizing public input. And the community of food truck and mobile food vendors also wrote expressing concern about the possibility of being shut down should there be any restrictions imposed on them. Copies of all the correspondences have been provided to the council this evening and posted on the website agenda. And we have several people lined up to speak, although they may be here also for item number four B, the OIR report.
Okay.
But I have a few hands raised here. So Hazel, we'll start with you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, this is Hazel Davalos with CAUS, where a community organization dedicated to building a stronger voice for working families on the central coast. And a big part of our work is making sure that the average person, from the high school student to Spanish-speaking farmworkers, get to have a seat at the table and have a say in decisions that the government makes that ultimately have a huge impact on their lives. The decision of who to hire as our city's chief of police is one of those. CAUS does work across the region and we've seen how other cities approach big hires like this one. In Santa Barbara, the city conducted a community survey that anyone could fill out and share what they hope to see on a new chief. Even this past year in Santa Maria, the high school district sought public input when deciding who to hire for superintendent using surveys and public hearings. It's so disappointing to see that the city hasn't made any real efforts to get broad community input on this hire. And frankly, it's a missed opportunity to engage Santa Marians and increase trust and relationship between residents and the police department. This is critical in a year like this one where the entire country has reckoned with where our local law enforcement can improve and how important it is to mend the divide between communities of color and race. It's not too late for the city to do the right thing. We ask that you conduct an online survey to hear from the community, followed by a virtual public town hall. We'd like to see a deciding panel made up of stakeholders and community members. Even if it's the chief's advisory council, that would work. But we must seek input from other Santa Marians who aren't already politically connected so that their opinions can be factored into any recommendation the council would make. We also would like to see the finalist names made public so that we, as the public, have time to process the information and share our thoughts before you decide on a hire. The decision to hire a new chief of police is so important and has lasting impacts on our community. We ask the council to take the time and do this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. Our next speaker is Cliff Solomon.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor Patino and city council members for letting me speak. My name is Cliff Solomon and I'm urging the city council to add transparency to the process of hiring the chief of police. I worry that there are times when the public is not quickly informed about police activities. For example, I'm concerned that the review of the police tactics used in the arrest of Alejandro Hernandez in October of last year has not been widely public. In these days, where there is so much conflict between those with power and those without, I urge the Santa Maria Police to work with the public to ensure that the best candidate is chosen. I would hope that community members would be included in the hiring process. I note that this is recommendation fifteen in the OIR group report on the Santa Maria Police Department's use of force being discussed tonight. Please follow this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Our next speaker is Beth Sweetwater.
There, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Okay. So my comment is based on the previous two speakers. And since I've listened to the whole meeting, I think what I'd like to say to you is that you were elected in a public way. You're public servants. And if you are not transparent, and if all the kind of, I'm not calling it bluster, but all the accolades and speeches tonight, if you don't remain transparent, especially like with a police appointing or a police chief, then all of it just smacks of hypocrisy and will not really help establish the kind of strength you need in the community to support businesses and other kinds of things. So your transparency is really the primary pump of how the city's going to operate. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Our next speaker is Nadia.
Hi, and good evening, city council members, and thank you for hearing my comment tonight. My name is Nadia Abushanov. I am the advocacy director for SBCAN, the Santa Barbara County Action Network. For 19 years, we've been supporting efforts concerning social justice throughout the county. In light of Chief Hanson's retirement, I share the concerns of others regarding the process for selecting a new chief of police. In the OIR report that will be presented later today, it states clearly that it is, quote, "more important than ever that police listen, engage, and coordinate with other community stakeholders." There are several areas of improvement for the police department listed in this report, but Recommendation 15 specifically suggests that the city engage community members at the interview stage of its hiring and promotional process. While I understand that there has been some community involvement through the advisory council, I question whether this level of engagement is sufficient. SBCAN is not aware of efforts to solicit input from the broader community and public. In a time where tensions in the relationships between police and communities are increasing throughout the country, it is an important time to make these efforts to build trust and support from community members in Santa Maria. I support what others have suggested to take the time to increase public input in this process through a survey and a public town hall to get more community input on this decision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pam Gates.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. I would like to comment on the process also for hiring a new chief of police. The police department is unique in the number of ways it interacts with the public, often in ways other departments don't, primarily when people are in crisis and there is a crime. And there are differing views on how the police should conduct themselves during these interactions. Some people want more police presence, some less. Some want more funding. Some want to reappropriate existing funding to social service and other agencies. Whatever their perspective, it is important to listen to all voices. I therefore think it is imperative that the city council have a hiring process that seeks the input of our Santa Maria community so you can hear from people firsthand. We must have transparency through every step of this hiring process, and the hiring committee must include community members and the current police advisory committee. The names of the finalists should also be made public, and there should be platforms for you to receive comments. Santa Maria is poised to grow greatly over the next 10 years, and we must have a police chief who has the necessary experience and thoroughly comprehends the many conversations happening regionally and nationally on rethinking public safety. In this process, I ask that you model recent successful examples of community involvement, such as the conversations that the Santa Barbara Supervisors are using in its racial equity and justice fact-finding, the search for the new superintendent for the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District, and the recent selection of the commissioners for the redistricting committee. In closing, I ask the council members to take the necessary time to make sure the search for a new police chief is transparent, involves our community in the hiring process, and selects candidates who will be prepared to lead our city now and in the future. Thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Peter Flores.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and members of the city council. I would like to begin by congratulating all those sworn in and recognized tonight. My name is Dr. Pete Flores, and I am a retired Navy veteran and K-12 educator. I have lived and worked in Santa Maria for the past 10 years. As Director of Student Services for the Santa Maria Joint Union High School District, I have had the opportunity to work with city officials, the chief of police, and Santa Maria police officers during a time that saw an unacceptable and unprecedented number of Santa Maria residents killed due to what the city described as gang violence. From March 2015 to January 2016, there were 15 Santa Marians killed, all Latinos, six of which were 18 years or younger. Majority were either bilingual or Spanish-speaking. And contrary to how they were portrayed, not all the victims were gang members. It should be noted that this data does not include all the murders, deaths, or other serious injuries that occurred due to violence during this timeframe. While we can differ on the circumstances that allowed for this to occur, or on the recommended solutions provided by grassroots movement from the community, a couple points are perfectly clear. Santa Maria continues to struggle with community violence, but more importantly, I think everyone would agree, we do not ever want to find ourselves in the same situation of 2015, 2016. This is why I have decided to do my civic duty tonight and speak on the importance of the recruitment of the police chief. It is imperative that the recruitment and selection process of the new chief be fully transparent and actively involved with the community. There should be both community input as to the type of leader it desires, but also active participation by being part of the hiring panel or selection process. Just my opinion, but our community deserves a fully qualified, bicultural, bilingual, Spanish-speaking police chief who is a culturally competent leader, who recognizes that structural racism does exist, and understands the need for criminal justice reform as a priority. For these and many other reasons, we do not desire someone who is going to maintain the status quo, but instead, for example, understands why the Black Lives Matter movement is actively engaged, and why we will never forget the census loss of life during this time and others since that. This is why we need a police chief that will lead transformative departmental cultural change meant to deepen the relationship and trust with the community they are charged to protect and serve. I encourage the mayor and city council to accomplish this by being inclusive, not exclusive. I would ask that you begin by extending an open invitation to one community action to be part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yasenia Baez.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, board. My name is Yasenia Baez. I'm a community organizer here in Santa Maria. I share the concerns of others in the hiring of the new chief of police without having any input from the community. As a community member, I believe that our input on this matters, and it's extremely important since the police department is there to serve and protect our community. We need a chief of police who understands the culture in our community, as well as having someone whom we can trust, which concerns me because at the community, we do not have a voice in this hiring process. Our police department interacts with the public regularly in ways other departments don't, and this is what makes the community involvement in the hiring of a police chief all that more important. Members of the board, please take this in consideration and call for a forum that would allow for community input in this process. Make a survey that we can share, or that can be shared with our community to gather feedback on what characteristics the community would like to see in a chief of police. Allow community members onto this hiring committee, which will bring a great transparency, which is highly, highly important. Board, please hear our community and take action. Allow Santa Maria residents to speak on this process and share feedback. The community should have a say in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Two more speakers. Jacqueline Mendoza.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Mendoza, and I am a community member in a member of Santa Maria. I have come to ask our city representatives to create a hiring process that will be transparent to everyone in our community. The chief of police is a critical role in our community's leadership, and I believe that our community should have a share of opinions on what we would like to see in a chief of police. Some ideas to consider when building a hiring process are: number one, a public forum with an online survey that gathers our community's feedback. Number two, making the name of the finalist public to better research each candidate. Number three, include community members in the deciding panel to vote once the finalists have been chosen. Finally, please ensure that the information is provided in Spanish, and make sure we have Latino representatives in the decision panel. If decided to hold a public forum, please keep in mind that many hard-working families finish work very late, and we have to allow for a time that works best for most people. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing this, Choi
Good evening, mayor and board members. My name is Tricaracoles, a resident of Santa Maria Valley and member of SB Slow Alliance. I'm going to call today to express our concerns here in Santa Maria Valley. Like the last speaker said, this is a working-class community, so a lot of people can't attend these meetings too early. I would suggest having the next meeting regarding this issue around the same time, or even at 8:00. This is a very important discussion when it comes to having a new police chief. As we've seen recently, there's a lot of homophobia in Santa Maria. We need a police chief that will be able to respond to that and to feel, to make our community members feel safe, specifically Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and those who belong to the LGBTQIA+ plus community. We don't need someone that's going to stick to the status quo. Santa Maria is a growing community, and we just need to be very transparent with this. We need the community's input. We need to know who this person is going to be, what his past has been like, to ensure that he will be doing his job, or her job. So, you know, I urge that this is a very transparent process. We also need someone that's going to represent the Indigenous farmworking community, who many times can't be present to these meetings, not just because of their working schedule, but they don't understand, they don't speak, they don't even speak Spanish sometimes. So we just need to be very transparent. We can't have a police chief that's going to harass street vendors who are trying to make a living, trying to feed their families during a pandemic. A police chief that's going to evict people from their homes during a pandemic, and even after the pandemic. And a police chief that's going to stand against homophobia. You know, gang violence isn't the only issue. There's white supremacists in the streets who are driving reckless, causing car accidents, harassing minorities, shouting at brown people, shouting at Indigenous people. Racism is really prevalent in this city and throughout the central coast. So please, I urge you for transparency and for the public's input. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I see one more caller, Jerry Schmidt. Did you have anything
Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm technically challenged sometimes. My name is Jerry Schmidt. I opened the office for Pacific Commercial Realty in 1989. We just celebrated our 31st year in business in Santa Maria. In 2003, I had served on enough nonprofit boards and thought I needed to do more, so I put myself through the Police Academy at Allen Hancock College. In 2004, I was sworn in as a police officer with the Santa Maria Police Department, and I was effectively working during the day, during the evenings, and working at my real estate company during the days. I served under Chief McConaughn, Chief Martin, and Chief Hanson, and I retired in 2017. I'm one of the founding members of the Santa Maria Police Council, and it's a nonprofit that was formed in 2008 to raise money for the men and women in our department for items that were not contained in the city budget. And our number-one goal has always been that every officer needs to come home to their family safe at night, and we would do everything we could to provide them the implements to do so. Interesting, we usually have a golf tournament comedy night every year to raise money. We couldn't do it this year for obvious reasons. And so Frank Maldonado and his sister Patty, through the farming community, decided to put on an event that was socially mandated or controlled. And ultimately, there was no entertainment. It was people that showed up and dropped checks off, and effectively, that was it. But they raised nearly $150,000 from the farming community. That's workers, that's company, that's companies. It was an amazing event, and it all came from the farming community. And that should give you an idea of how the farming community, at least, views our police department. And we've got a lot of support. When hiring comes into play, not only as a private company or public entity, you're either going to hire from the outside, or you're going to hire from the inside through succession planning. And succession planning is an interesting concept, but it doesn't work if there's disparity, or distrust, or division in an organization. And it doesn't work if there aren't qualified candidates in the organization. And it certainly doesn't work when existing conditions are so bleak that, you know, finding a leader amongst the ranks just really isn't an option. In that case, you have to go outside, and you have to bring in fresh ideas and new perspectives. And, you know, hiring from the outside is exactly what you do when there's a problem, or if an organization is stagnant, or if you don't have qualified candidates to choose from. In 2012, the city of Santa Maria did just that. They hired from the outside. They brought in Chief Martin from the LA Sheriff Department at a time when there was disagreement, distrust, division in just about every part of the department. And Councilman Cordero, you were there. You saw it. It was a horrible experience. It was an absolute nightmare. But it was interesting. Chief Martin was brought in, also brought in two commanders from Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. One of them was Phil Hanson. Chief Hanson was groomed by Chief Martin to become the chief ultimately, when Chief Martin retired. Chief Hanson has also done a similar thing, and that's not only in making the department a better place and addressing issues and problems, but also promoting from within, giving people confidence in that department that they can do a better job, and seeing everybody actually become a better person, and, you know, better officers and better administrators. But ultimately, he also raised up commanders, ultimately, one of whom hopefully would...
Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Schmidt, I hate to cut you off, but your time is up. Sorry. All right. Thank you. And that would be it.
Thank you. And thank you for all the public comments. You've already given the written ones. Okay. Before we move on, Mr. Silva, any comments from you?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The comments tonight reflect many of the comments we've consistently heard from Santa Marians over several years. They want a police department that is professional and effective in keeping our community safe. Later on tonight's agenda, we have the results of an independent audit of our police department. Five years ago, we knew we had work to do, and tonight you'll see the results of that work. work. The department has significantly improved, as has its effectiveness in keeping our community safe. We have been planning for years to hire a new police chief when the time comes, as well as growing effective leaders throughout the rank of the department. That has been a priority. By all measures, professional standards to community support, we see we are on a positive path. We don't take that for granted. We understand that it takes work to get to this point and work to continue to be on this path. I respect and appreciate the great work it took for the departments to get on this path, and I continue to see the great work of our police personnel with their interactions with our community on a daily basis. And as I mentioned, we can't take this for granted. It takes continuous effort from all of us to be able to support the turnaround that we've had in the police department and the trajectory it's now on. An internal recruitment for our next police chief is underway, and I expect to be able to make an announcement of who the next chief will be in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. So, moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll-call vote with one motion, and these items are discussed only on request of council members.
Okay, does anyone have anything they wish to have pulled?
I do, I do have. Madam Mayor, I would like to abstain of...
Abstain, okay.
...three B. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Soto, anything for you?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to approve?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
With exception of three B.
Okay. Second?
Did you second it?
What?
Did you second it?
No.
Oh, second.
Oh, okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with exception of three B. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve three B.
Second.
Okay, this motion to approve three B and a second, a further discussion, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Abstain.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will entertain nominations for the position of mayor pro temp for a one-year term.
And, you know, I have decided that we are gonna move this on to the next calendar because we don't have a full council tonight. Thank you. Mr. Stillwell, did you have a comment to make on that? Mr. Watson, you're okay? Okay. So, let's see. The next item is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation from Mr. Michael Ginaco of the Office of Independent Review Group on the results of the 2020 Police Department Audit.
Thank you. And, Mr. Stillwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. I can introduce this item. It's important for us to have an independent review of our city operations to verify how we are doing, gain insights in how to improve, and to provide actionable steps forward. We're fortunate again tonight to have the Office of Independent Review conduct a review of the police department and report on that review. And we're fortunate for many reasons. One is to be able to have professional insight into the details of our operations that we can reflect upon and augment. Another is to have a professional organization that not only understands local law enforcement, but understands how it effectively meshes as part of a community, as a bond of professional service and public safety. And we're also fortunate to have OIR complete this review because of their experience and understanding of the Santa Maria Police Department, having dug deeply into the department six years ago. That familiarity allowed them to have a context for this review and an understanding of how the department was then and into what it's transformed to today with a vision of what it can be tomorrow. Chief Hanson spearheaded the effort this time around and can introduce this item. You should be proud of the report and the great strides that the department has been able to make. It would not have been possible without the confidence and support of the city council and of the Santa Maria community, and the hard work of the city staff, not only in the police department, but of the city as a whole. And thank you all for that support and for the positive momentum we're able to have in our police department. And with that, Chief Hanson, please.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, council members, it's my pleasure to introduce...
Mr. Mike Ginaco, Michael Ginaco, and Ms. Julie Ruland of the OIR Group. I want to give a little background on them just briefly here, because I think it's very important that our listeners understand, and those people that called earlier tonight were so passionate about our department and where we're at, that they understand the qualifications of the people that we brought in to do this report. This is gonna be given jointly by Mr. Ginaco and Ms. Ruland. The OIR Group is a highly acclaimed civilian oversight entity led by Mr. Michael Ginaco, a veteran former civil rights prosecutor. Before establishing the OIR Group, Mr. Ginaco was chief attorney for the Office of Independent Review for Los Angeles County, and a former chief of the Civil Rights Section of the U.S. Attorney's Office for the Central District of California. He also served for 10 years as a trial attorney with the Civil Rights Division at the Justice Department of Washington, D.C. While at the Civil Rights Division, Mr. Ginaco supervised over 20 federal grand jury investigations into police misconduct, and conducted several successful civil rights prosecutions against police officers for excessive force. He has assisted law enforcement entities throughout the country with constitutional policing issues, critical incident reviews, internal affairs investigations, and the design of effective oversight mechanisms. Ms. Ruland also worked on the current audit with Mr. Ginaco, and she's worked in oversight for nearly 20 years, with 14 of those years being with the OIR Group. I commissioned this audit in April, I believe it was, of this year, and I feel it's just a very important way to bring in outsiders that are professional, that understand policing, that understand transparency issues and whatnot, and come and give us a report card on how we're doing. And I'm proud of how we've done, but I know that there's always work to be done, and we can always get better, and it's part of our culture at SMPD now to pursue excellence, and that's what this is all about. So with that, I will turn it over, the report, and it'll have recommendations for us to follow in the future. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ginaco.
Julie, are you there?
I'm here.
There you are.
I thought Mike was here.
He is. I don't see that his microphone is going off, though. Hold on for one sec.
Okay. He's been, I know he's been tuning in, so let me just see. I can start. All right, well, I will get us started, then. Thank you for that introduction, Chief Hanson, and thank you, and congratulations to you on your retirement. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for having us tonight. We're sorry we can't be there in person, and it's been an extraordinary year. These are difficult and interesting times. We would have enjoyed meeting you all in person, and to see some of those excellent holiday lights also in person. We did, we were first engaged by Santa Maria back in 2012, and as some of you noted at the beginning of this evening, the police department has come a long way since then, and we were happy to be invited by Chief Hanson back to do a sort of follow-up review on where the department has come since our initial report back in 2014. And we are happy to give a mostly very positive report. We don't often give the kind of credit that we were able to give in this report, but as we'll get into more detail, there really is a lot for this department to be proud of, and we do make some recommendations. But we are happy to overall give a very positive report. I see that Mike has joined us now, so I don't wanna, the plan was for him to kick us off, so I'm gonna let him jump in here if he wants to, and then I'll come back.
Julie, you just did a yeoman's job of pretending to be me. City leadership, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Oh, great. I'm sorry about the technical difficulties. I think I've been on Zoom all day, about five different calls, but it's great to be with you, at least virtually, and as Julie indicated, we were hoping to have an opportunity to be with you in person. I have actually had the fortune of being before your counsel on two prior occasions, back when we did our earlier auditing reports. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you today, and as Julie was indicating, I think it really is a testament to the interest in your police department, in transparency, and the interest in improvement, and the confidence that your police leadership has about some of the reforms that have been underway over these past eight years. I'm not sure I could have said any of that when we got our first assignment about eight years ago, as a result of some very tragic and unfortunate situations that I think were symptoms of some of the issues with regard to leadership of the police department at that time. But as Julie was indicating, the fact that your chief of police reached out, no crisis, no controversy, but just reached out to us to sort of bring us back and to give us an opportunity to take another look at the progress of your police department, identify any remaining issues, I think that's a testament to a number of things, one of it being the confidence in a leader, and the recognition that doing so is not going to be necessarily, not going to be to the disadvantage of the department. And I really think that says a lot about how the department has been moving forward. You know, we have done this work for probably, as indicated, you know, close to 20 years, and sometimes we will write a report, and leadership will, leadership of the agency will say a lot of nice things and say we'll get to the recommendations, but unfortunately, there are often times when that report will just go right into a filing cabinet. And obviously, from our experience and from our most recent review, that didn't happen in your city. Starting with Chief Martin and continuing to Chief Hanson, the recommendations that we made six years ago were taken to heart, and I think it's a better department as a result of acceptance that the department could and should get better, and in our review, as expressed in this report, that the department did get better. I'll ask Julie to, I'm gonna hand this off to Julie just to talk about some of the specific matters that we found. Julie?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. We spent a lot of time looking at documents relating to two main categories of things, uses of force and handling of allegations of officer misconduct. And our emphasis in looking at those documents is to focus on internal investigative and review processes. So, looking not so much at the outcome of a particular thing, and whether the final call was right, but looking at the process that got you there. And so for, with misconduct allegations, we didn't find any big issues with the investigations there. We found that those investigations were done in a thorough and complete way. And beyond that, we look at, we tend to look at sometimes little things, and because we think in the little things, sometimes those little things can say a lot. And so something that we just wanted to make note of, and we do in the report, is the way in which the department responds to public complaints. So complaints that are filed, complaints alleging misconduct that are presented to the department by members of your public. And what we find often when we look at these complaints in other agencies is a sort of boilerplate response, you know? The response that's required is just to inform somebody of the outcome of the complaint. And we often see a kind of, just a very rote response, "Thank you for your complaint", you know? "Here's the outcome", and, you know, "Signed off". And here, we found that the chief does an excellent job of communicating with members of the public about the outcomes and about the process. As you can imagine, those boilerplate responses don't inspire a lot of confidence that a complaint was ever taken seriously. But the kind of detail that we saw in the letters here, sometimes an apologetic tone when that is appropriate, a willingness to share something of the steps taken to investigate can go a long way toward promoting trust in the validity of the outcome. And so that was a little thing, an indicator to us about the seriousness with which the department takes these kinds of complaints. And again, like I said, the investigations we thought were good, but going that one step further and making the effort to communicate that way with the public, we thought is a great sign for the health of the organization. One place here where we did see some room for improvement is in a willingness to engage with outside entities, where the allegation that was brought in the complaint raises broader issues of concern that might have actually little to do with the allegation of wrongdoing, but that nonetheless can provide a window into an issue that the department may not otherwise have been aware of. And so, for example, in a couple of the cases we looked at, there were some issues having to do with policing in and around schools. And there was no evidence that the officers did anything wrong, but we thought it might have been worth exploring the possibility of some creative solutions to the issues that led to those complaints. And so we make a recommendation that the department pay attention to those sort of tangential issues and think, sort of think outside the box and think creatively about how they might address those. The second big category of documents that we looked at were uses of force, and that is always a major focus of our auditing work for reasons that were made all too obvious this year with events around the country. We found some gaps in the process, in the department's internal processes for investigating and reviewing deadly force incidents that largely had to do with an overreliance on the sheriff's office investigation into the possibility of criminal liability. We repeatedly comment on this in our work in many different jurisdictions, that if you focus only on the legality of the deadly force, you miss a lot of potential learning opportunities. There are always things that can be learned from these incidents, and that should be part of an internal administrative review process. Things like tactics leading up to the shooting, supervision issues, the conduct of officers following a shooting, having to do with, you know, how quickly medical aid is getting to somebody who's been injured. In our meetings with department leaders, they were very receptive to our recommendations for creating a more formal process for evaluating these incidents. I think that there is a lot of that internal evaluation that's happening, but it's happening in an informal, sort of not documented way, and for, as sort of, again, setting that roadmap for going forward, we just think the better practice is to have a very formal, specific kind of process that everybody, that is always going to be followed when one of these very serious... is always going to be followed when one of these very serious, significant events happens. And as we said, our meetings with department leaders, they certainly understood our recommendations and were largely in agreement, and I think we found them to be very receptive to those recommendations, which wasn't a surprise, because we were very impressed by the way the department looks holistically at so-called, you know, lower-level use of force incidents, force that doesn't rise to the level of a deadly force incident. And we give some examples in our report, and I'm not going to go into details on those. But in general, we found a willingness that we don't often see to identify and document tactical issues or places or ways in which officers' performance could have been better. Even where the whole event was found to be within policy, there was an acknowledgement that there might have been a better way to go about this. And there was a documentation of the debriefing, of the training that happened. And that sort of holistic scrutiny, again, is not too common among agencies we review. And it really demonstrates an embrace of the principles that we laid out in our 2014 report, and an understanding of why it's so important to give that kind of attention to all types of uses of force. I think in terms of the complaints and the force, those were the things I wanted to highlight. And so I'm going to turn it back to Mike to talk about a couple of other areas where we made some recommendations.
Thank you, Julie. I just wanted to say that in terms of context, when we were looking at the police department six or eight years ago, there were some very basic and fundamental issues that needed to be addressed. And so we were, in some ways, going back to principles of policing 101, if you will. And to the degree we have recommendations in this report, I just want city leadership to recognize that we are talking about refinements at a postgraduate level or a doctorate level, where the basic fundamentals of progressive policing have been, in our view, ingrained into the police department as a result of the acceptance and understanding of how important it is that when there's an allegation that a police officer has strayed, or an allegation that a police officer has used too much force, that it is incumbent upon the police agency to use its investigative machinery in a way to figure out whether that occurred, and if it did occur, how best to address the situation. And as Julie indicated, and as I concur, and as the report indicates, on pretty much all fronts, this agency, at least in December 2020, is moving forward on all cylinders with regard to those basic precepts. Do we have recommendations? Yeah, we have 16 of them. Is a police department ever perfect? Can a police department improve? Of course. And so the recommendations are made in that spirit, but with the understanding that we are intending to improve upon a very fine product, and a product that I believe the leadership of the department and the community should be proud of. And I do think it is important to recall and remember that as a result of the support that the city leadership has provided, and your community has provided with regard to a dedication of resources and willing to levy themselves additional tax in order to support some of the progress that was needed, getting a new station, and, you know, upping the resource dedication, that all also played into, I think, what we found. So the other thing I wanted to say is that when we looked at the department several years ago, one of the things we found was that the command staff just below the chief's position were not really being sufficiently groomed, or there wasn't any really succession plan for who the next chief would be. Whenever a chief retires, and I know you're having a chief retire, whenever a chief retires, the question is, do we promote from within, or do we need to select from outside? And eight years ago, that question could only be answered one way because of the inability to groom and prepare individuals within the organization to take the helm. And what we learned in our most recent review is that the chief had begun to prepare his commanders for the potential of them achieving that next step, as a result of rotating the commands, giving each of his commanders the opportunity to be involved in all aspects of policing within the agency. And to his credit, he did leave the, is leaving the department with the option. And obviously, city leadership would be making this decision, and we are not making a recommendation on this, but at least the option is there. And there are people within the organization, as a result of that experience, that could take the helm, if that is a desire of city leadership, as you all move forward. That pretty much is all we have to say. We're certainly, the report's there, we're certainly able to answer any questions that the report has generated. But we really appreciated the assignment when we got to spend the day up in Santa Maria, when things were not so dire as they are right now. We were very impressed with not only the command staff, but other folks that are lower in the totem pole, if you will, but show a lot of promise about future leadership within the agency. So bottom line is, I think there are things that can be improved, and I think will be improved as a result of our audit. But I think you should be proud of your department and the strides it's made over these past eight years. Thank you very much for entertaining our presentation. And again, we're able to respond to any questions you may have.
Questions from the council? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jankow, my name is Mike Cordero, and I was one of the people that you interviewed when you came up in 2012. My interview was done at my home.
I remember that, sir. I remember that.
Yes, and you've probably done hundreds of them since then. And it's not as much a question, I think, as comments. I could hardly wait to get my hands on this document, to read it. And I did have some questions before I read the document. And upon reading the document, every question that I had was answered within the document that your organization prepared for us to read here tonight. I thank you for the report, and I'm impressed with the changes that were made. And without rehashing the old stuff, you know, I would agree with you that we have come a long, long way since 2012. And the things that you mentioned for, or recommend for improvement, I want to compare them in some kind of way. And I think that when we took a look at ourselves in 2012, and I was on the council at the time, we needed to do major reconstructive surgery on our entire organization. And these recommendations that you're making now are certainly important, and I appreciate hearing about them, but they're somewhat cosmetic compared to what we did in 2012. And I am truly, truly impressed by the in-depthness of this document, and the way in which you conducted your interviews in 2012, and obviously, the way that you conducted them in the results of this report here. And it's a pleasure to read where we are today from where we were then. And thank you very, very much for your contribution to our community.
Councilmember Cordero, thank you, and your analogy to the healthcare situation is right on point.
Ms. Soto?
Yes, thank you. My question is more about me trying to pick your brain. So I know that you're working with, you've worked with and continue to work with multiple police departments across the state. And so my question is around one of the recommendations that you made around gender equity within the department, and our, no offense, Steve, but, you know, our inability to thus far be able to achieve that within our officers and also ranking sworn officers. And so I guess my question is, like, what would you recommend? What do you recommend? Like, what have you seen other departments do that could be effective for our department?
Yeah, it's a complicated issue, Councilmember Soto. And I do think that, to the degree we found, for example, you know, no women of rank within the current ranks of the department, I think it is a legacy from, you know, things that were going on when we first got started 12 years ago. It does take a while for at least some reforms to sort of become ingrained within the department. And so I think what we have is we have, and we had an opportunity when we visited the city a couple of months ago, to meet some of the newer female officers. And as we indicate in our report, because these officers don't have the tenure yet for a promotion to sergeant, it's going to take a couple more years before they'll be eligible. And one thing you don't want to do is you don't want to prematurely promote somebody who doesn't meet the eligibility requirements, because they will be perceived by colleagues as attaining a rank that they wouldn't deserve except for their gender, and that's something that you don't want to do. But I do think, as we indicated in our report, that the department is on the right track. That doesn't mean, Councilmember Soto, that they can't continue to redouble their efforts, one, to mentor females in the department that are interested in a promotion, and I think they're doing that. And also to continue to search, as they recruit new officers to come in to the department, to continue to search for females through the various ways in which they can locate good candidates, to ensure that you have that bench, if you will, coming up the ranks so that you do achieve that gender equity that is ideal.
Great, thank you. And then another question that I have, and it's also part of one of your recommendations on the report, and that's around community engagement during hiring and promotional processes. And so I'm also curious to know what you've seen other departments do that has been effective.
Absolutely, Councilmember Soto. What we have seen is, for example, when applicants have gone through the basic requirements and are vetted through HR or through the department itself, and are qualified, to have those initial interviews conducted by, you know, the background by the police department, but also to have a civilian component, where individuals from the community are brought in to also interview these potential applicants, and sort of gain their insight, because they're going to be coming at this whole issue of who would make a good police department for Santa Maria, as a result of their experiences in Santa Maria that are outside law enforcement. But I think that that kind of input is very helpful. Same is true when there is an opening for sergeant, or lieutenant, or commander. And we have found that agencies that reach out to members of their advisory group, or just the general community, to come in and sit in on these promotional panels as a civilian, I think adds to the life experience, and I think provides a different level of input with regard to who it is that is going to be supervising folks within the department. And this out-facing, this interest in recognizing, and I also think it benefits the promotional process for potential sergeants, potential commanders, to realize that they're going to have somebody that's going to be inputting on whether they receive the promotional decision from outside the department. I think that sort of gives them a different mindset, and gives potential promotees a different mindset about they have to recognize that important component of outreach, even as they're becoming sergeants, even as they're becoming commanders, as opposed to ultimately the chief of police position.
Thank you. And then my last question, because I, and this question isn't something that I noticed really in the report. I know you do talk about community engagement, but there wasn't much talk about, like, media. And so one of the things that I've noticed to be, find quite interesting here in our community is that we don't have, we don't have, like, and maybe, maybe this is misinformation, maybe I'm not well informed, but when it comes to media relations and, like, external affairs for the police department, most of our, you know, communications is through our communications director within the city manager's office, but it doesn't seem like we have, like, one person at our police department, aside from Chief Hanson, especially when it comes to speaking to Spanish media. And I've noticed incidences where there could be, not discrepancies, but like, oh, I'm sure that our city manager's office would have worded this differently in Spanish. And so I'm curious if you would have, if that's something that you, that you also, well, I didn't see it referred to in the report, but I'm curious as to what your thoughts are on that, and what could be done to address that, so that we ensure that we have a unified message coming from the city, and that there is no discrepancies between what the city manager's office could be saying, and what someone could be saying to Spanish media, for instance.
Yes, it's a good point. And particularly in your community, or any community in California these days, the interest, there is, I think, an importance to understand that there are a lot of individuals that, you know, language is, Spanish is their first language, and that community needs to be, to be, there needs to be outreach to them in a consistent way, in the same way that there's outreach in others. I think the fact that, with regard at least to some of the critical incidents, council member, there has been an effort to communicate both in English and Spanish. For example, after an officer-involved shooting, we saw some English and Spanish videos that related what the department knew about the incident, consistent with a new law that requires more information on these kinds of incidents. So I think that's a good sign. But I also think, consistent with our recommendations, more can be done. For example, one of our recommendations is to provide more information on the website with regard to uses of force, with regard to complaints, with regard to a lot of other information that we think would be helpful to put out there. Because a department that's confident about how it is conducting and regulating itself should be also willing to provide that information to its public. My understanding is that some of this has to do with the fact that of this has to do with the fact that the department doesn't have its own website and has to work with the city. But maybe you, as a leadership of IT and other heads, can push along this interest in increased transparency.
Thank you.
Ms. Escobedo, any questions?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. This is Mayor Patino, and I also would like to say thank you. I know what we were like years ago, and I like your analogy of a complete reconstructive surgery, and without going into great detail, but this is, this is great. And I'm just very appreciative of the report that's come out, and I want to thank you very much. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A little, just a little bit to say that we're kind of on the same page. The two main focuses that Councilwoman Soto brought up were also questions in my mind that I took the answers from the document. And actually, I spoke to Chief Hanson about it during our brief recess. So at least we're all thinking on the same page. And I wonder if it wouldn't be appropriate for Mr. Stillwell to go over the hiring process, because I get the feeling from a lot of people that they think the council is responsible for hiring the police chief, and that is not the case. And this will be the third police chief hired while I was on the city council. And I was not involved with the hiring process for any, either of the other two. And that's just, just not done that way. And I think people are being misled or ill-informed here. So could you do that?
Thank you, Councilmember Cordero. So to answer, I guess, three of those questions. So, yeah, the first is, the police chief is an appointee of the city manager, the structure of government that the city council set up in the municipal code is the council manager form of government. So the process would be hiring an internal, or a officer who reports to the city manager, not as an appointment of the city council. The city council appoints the city manager and the city attorney. And regarding gender equity, that was an important issue when we saw that raised. I mean, we knew of that issue before. When we saw it raised in the report, we did some additional research. And, you know, the main point there is, it's not unique to Santa Maria Police Department. There's a recent federal study that looks at federal law enforcement agencies, which mirrors Santa Maria PD quite closely with the issues that Mr. Janaco mentioned with, you know, trying to recruit folks who, recruit women in particular, who are able to have time to evolve in the department, do different tasks, different duties, and gain the experience. It doesn't mean that's not an important recommendation, it's one we do want to focus on quite closely. As an aside, I think in the last report, one of the focuses was having a police force that mirrors our, the populations of our, the demographic population of our community of Hispanic balance. And if you've noticed now, our police force is much more balanced in that way. So I'm confident that when we do focus on these issues, even one as broadly as gender equity is in law enforcement nationwide, that we will be able to make great strides on that. And then the third point on, that Councilmember Soto mentioned, on communication, that is, you know, a very important issue for us. We do, we have consistently expanded our communication, most recently with more social media, both in English and Spanish, a lot more video content. And so we do, even though that wasn't specifically in the report, that's a good opportunity for us to further tighten the communication efforts we have in our, from our communication manager, with the efforts from the departments, and both in print media, social media, television, mass media as well. So those are all good, very good comments. And it's going to, you know, as like the last report, it takes some time to build in these systems and processes, but we're committed to doing it, and we do expect to see improvement in all those areas.
Madam Mayor.
Sure.
The, it should be brought out, I think, that the city is not adverse to this at all. As you will recall, our number two in command was Jennifer Alm, that had quite a tenure with the department over the years. And she was the senior commander at one point in time.
Yes.
And her and I worked together for a number of years. And so it's, it just, we just haven't had that person come to the top yet to assume those responsibilities.
Yeah, I know that, and this goes back to communication, that I know Sergeant Lotta and others have done radio, done radio and gone on radio periodically, and then with the Downtown Fridays. And we're here, we're in this COVID-19, where we're just not getting out a lot, and we're not being very visible. Our police department isn't. So it's a, it's a very difficult time to do a lot of things. But I know that they do a lot of radio, so. Yes. Ms. Escobedo.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. Thank you. I guess my follow-up questions are for city managers, Stillwell and Chief Hanson. Now that we've seen this report and have read the recommendations presented to us, I'm curious to ask, how are we going to move forward to ensure that this gets implemented, especially with the transition that we know will be taking place?
Well, we've already started. So from the time that we first received this report, from the time I received a draft, I shared it with the command staff. And we are actively engaged in talking about how to implement these things. This audit was done at our request. It's something that we take very, very seriously. And we wholeheartedly agree with the vast majority. There might be some little nuances that we might disagree with, but we agree with OIR's recommendations here. Some of these things with respect to, say, gender equity, that's something we're working on all the time. And it's something I had a long talk with Mr. Janaco about when the original draft came out, because it's, I will say, without reservation, without reservation, our female officers are not being discriminated against, or held out of any jobs, or barred in any way. As a matter of fact, they are amazing. They are dominating a lot of our specialty assignments. It's just a matter, it is literally a matter of sheer numbers. And eight out of 10 of our females, at the time the last promotional exam had like three years on, something like that. You can't promote somebody at three years to sergeant, lieutenant, commander, whatnot. It's going to take some time. But they are on a track to be incredible, because of the specialty assignments that they're working. We have three detectives right now. I've got a motorcycle officer, I've got a canine officer. They lead the Peace Officers Association. I mean, it's amazing, the different jobs that our female officers are doing. And they're just doing a fabulous job. And in doing these specialty things, in addition to things, their basic patrol duties and things, they are gaining tremendous experience and leadership experience. And they're, the sky's the limit for them. But it just, you have to put your time in first. And that's where we're at. Now, the bigger problem, quite frankly, is hiring more, to have that deep bench. And I'll make a public plea here on the microphone. If you know anybody that's interested, I mean, we have a recruitment that's starting right now. And I would love a class full of qualified female applicants, would be absolutely fabulous. So I would entertain any suggestions anybody has. But I want to assure you of something. You know my command staff. They are engaged in this, and they are already engaged in finding solutions to some of this. Quite frankly, I will take personal responsibility for some of the, a good portion of the recommendations deal with that one deadly force incident. And I asked myself, I went home that night, I said, how could we do so well on normal force investigations and be lacking on the deadly force ones here, in terms of that holistic approach? And that's me, because I have a background in that sort of thing. I was, I go to every shooting. I was out there that night. I walked through the ground. I spoke to the officers. I spoke to the sergeant. I spoke to the family of the deceased. I was quite confident that I knew what happened. And so I was at ease, I guess I should say, with what we did, and what our participation was. And I didn't push for that broader holistic investigation. That will change. From now on, we've already decided, as a command group, when we have an officer-involved shooting, we will put a lieutenant as an internal investigator with the sheriff's department from the get-go on that first night. And we will make sure that we get a complete holistic report on our activities leading up to and after, and everything, training, tactics, policy, equipment, all those issues will be extensively looked at. So I'd just say, we're working on that now, and the staff is already coming up with recommendations and solutions to that stuff.
Great. And I wasn't here when the last OIR report was presented to the council a couple of years back. And so did they, did the police, did our police department give, like, updates once a quarter to the council on where we were with these recommendations?
The feedback was multiple ways. So a lot of them tied into department goals, and tied into budget priorities of the city council. A lot of it was used for decision-making, both with the council, with the department. Many of them, as the chief's mentioning, are changes in procedure and practice. So those would be internally focused, things we might report on, you know, offline.
And yes, ma'am, there was a formal, the chief of police, it wasn't a quarterly thing, but a year later or so, the chief Martin came in, and the report, the last report came out from 2014, 2015, chief Martin came to council and did a presentation on how we had met those goals, or where we were at with that. I was part of, I was involved in preparing that response. So yes, absolutely, that's what you can anticipate from us.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that that's what we're going to anticipate with this report. And then my last question, I promise. So we heard public comment, we saw the recommendation here for community engagement through hiring process. I'm curious to know whether we will take that recommendation here in the recent, in the upcoming weeks, to implement it for the hiring process with the police chief.
So we have, we, so what we have, what we think we have done was involve the public and do some stakeholder engagement with the community groups that we now are engaged with. We recognize from the report that there's more we want to build into our systems at all the levels and all the ranks. And so that's a change in our hiring process. We'll do that, as Mr. Janaco mentioned, at the different levels. And we will need to be more systematic in bringing people in and expanding our role with the community engagement. So that'll take a little bit of time. Our goal has been, with this process that we have started with the internal process for recruitment, was to have someone in place ahead of Chief Hanson's imminent retirement here. So it's a parallel path, but one that we want to continue to expand upon.
I'm sure that if the community have questions, or they want to see something addressed, they can always email the city manager's office.
Sure.
Or the council, if they have, if they want to make sure that something is added or a part of that.
Sure, yep.
Is the report still on the file? The original report, is that still in the net?
Yeah.
So that might help you to read that. I mean, it's interesting reading, and it's still available to us.
Ms. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question to the city manager office in regards to the website. How many complaints, I was looking into the website, do we have a number of, how many complaints come from the website?
Councilman Escobedo, I know this year to date, we have 24 complaints, which is actually down from last year, which is nice. You know, we had about mid-30s, I think, last year. We had 24 so far this. I do not have a count. I can get back to you on that, on the numbers that came through a website, or came through a form, because we will take those over the internet, we'll take them on the website, fill out, we'll take them, somebody can come in the counter and fill out. We've got the complaint forms right there on the counter in English and Spanish. And also, our supervisors carry them. And if somebody has a contact in the field and they wish to make a complaint, we will take the complaint in the field. We don't do anything to dissuade complaining parties. But in terms of website versus like a hard copy form, I do not have that kind of figure, sir.
Thank you. Yeah. My question is, first, I would like to say, great, I was looking at the version in Spanish, really simple, really easy to fill out. I think that's, that helps a lot, and more when, you know, you might be, you might be, also, you may speak English as well, but it's always easier to describe, I mean, talking from my second language is English. So it's easier for me to describe certain situations, more if it's a stressful situation on my own language. So thank you. I would say that the only suggestion I would make in regards to website, try to make it, because it took me some clicks to get to that point, maybe a little bit more, maybe put it in the first page, or more visual. I'm happy that the sergeant and the police officer, they carry in their hard copy. So I was not aware of that. So I'm happy to, that's happening. So thank you.
As the city grows, that's one of the things that we would like to do. We brought it up at our last budget meeting. Of course, budgets are difficult right now, but the police department would like to launch its own website, have an independent website that ties into the city website. That's one of our goals. But of course, we have to work that through city management and IT and whatnot. But it would allow us a little more control over that, and ability to be a little more responsive in some of those ways. So we'll be looking towards that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Do we have any written correspondence, or any requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, staff received written comment from Kathy Sherram and David Dennis, encouraging the council to consider recommendation number 15, to engage community members at the interview stage of hiring and promotional processes. Mr. Dennis also suggested a continued focus on gender equity. And that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, he needs to meet our female police officers. They're very, very, very dynamic. What was that? Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay, I want to thank everyone, and the report has been received and will be filed. So the report that we had from 2012, is that in your office, in case?
It's on the website.
It's on the website? Oh, okay. Okay. So, okay, probably we have about three members that'd like to read it again. I mean, it'd probably be good reading again. I can't remember it, so.
I remember it well.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Janaco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, city managers. So thank you, councilmembers. Chief, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
This was a project that we really appreciated being here with you.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Rulon. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much, both of you. Okay, the next item is a report by city manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Two reports. First is, the next meeting of the city council is January 5. And we have a few items of note. One is a cooperative agreement for our new interchange up on Broadway and 101. The council will have the opportunity to appoint council members to outside boards. And we'll bring forward a pushcart vendor ordinance. We've had a number of complaints about flower vendors and push carts. We want to bring forward some options for the city council to further focus on those issues and give us some more tools. And that concludes my report on January 5. Also, I want to mention, we did complete our recruitment process for fire chief, and we did make an internal announcement yesterday that Deputy Chief Todd Tuggle will be our interim fire chief for the next few months. And we're putting together a press release to describe a little bit more about Todd. Just in short, he's been with the city here for about 10 months. He also has a couple decades of experience in Fresno Police or Fire Department before coming over here. So we're fortunate to have him and his leadership here. And I'm glad he went through the process. and we'll be able to have him transition prior to Chief Champion leaving with his last day this week. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. You know, I, I was going to read this earlier before we start doing oral reports from the council members. And I asked Sue Anderson to give me an up, an update on what was going on here locally in the hospital, because I, I get concerned when I'm on these meetings and people are talking about what's going on in the East Coast or someplace else and, and they're not referencing Santa Maria that we're, that we're dealing with here. And I just think it's very important. Marion, and this was as of December 14th. So Marion is, is caring for 42 COVID-19 positive patients. We have 11 of them, 11 that, patients in the hospital, six are requiring ventilation. And Arroyo Grande Community Hospital has no active COVID patients. We have an increased capacity of 48 beds that we are reinstituting at the original hospital for the use of the surge space if it continues to evaluate daily. When I spoke to Sue Anderson today, she was talking about that we are now dealing with the Thanksgiving group. And I'm just wondering if that Thanksgiving group isn't going to get together for Christmas and maybe we won't have that surge again. There are a few congregate care settings and skilled nursing facilities in our community struggling with outbreaks, creating the potential of a large surge of patients, but at this point, it's being managed. We've been notified of outbreaks at CMC and Lompoc prisons, as well as Atascadero State Hospital. Most patients are being treated in place and not requiring hospitalization at this time. Lompoc Valley Medical Center is caring for any transfers from Lompoc Prison. Marion is working closely with the San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara Public Health Department and Office of Emergency Services. Marion is prepared to receive the COVID-19 vaccine and have a plan for administering it when it becomes available to us. She thought this week, probably, they would start administering. They have the freezers, the deep freezers that can keep the vaccine. But they have to be ready to go to inoculate the people, because I think that vaccine, they can keep for five hours. So they've got to be ready to go and get the people. So that will be the, the caretakers, the doctors and the nurses. And I asked her, I said, so how many, how many of your health professionals have said they wouldn't take it? And she says 90, she say 99% of our doctors said that they would take the vaccine and it was like 70-some percent of the nurses said that they would. We anticipate receiving an initial allocation this week from the Santa Barbara Public Health and San Luis Obispo Public Health. Marion has the deep freezer required to store the vaccines and will be helping store vaccines for Lompoc Valley Medical Center and French Hospital Medical Center. Subsequent allocations will be coming from Dignity Health. Prioritization for doses have been determined with guidance from Common Spirit Health, CDC and the California Department of Public Health. Initially, the doors out, the doses allocated to our hospital are for the frontline healthcare workers, including our physicians and contracted staff working inside the hospital. We will start providing voluntary weekly surveillance COVID-19 testing for our healthcare workers beginning Wednesday, December 16th. And this is only for surveillance purposes, not for symptomatic individuals. And this is only for healthcare workers. Symptomatic employees will be handled through Employee Health. We have adequate supplies of PPE. Our hospitals continue to have sufficient and appropriate equipment to protect our caregivers and patients. We continuously assess the volume of supplies at our facilities and have additional procurement plans to ensure our employees have the PPEs necessary. We have enough staff for our current workload. We will continue to evaluate elective surgeries daily and will make adjustments as needed. We will continue to maintain our outpatient services not impacted by the current surge. Last week, out of an abundance of caution, we implemented, implemented new limited hospital visitation. So no visitors to outpatient areas with the following exceptions. And that's one consistent care partner for labor and delivery patients, one consistent care partner for pediatric patients, and exceptions will be made on a case-by-case basis for compassionate care situation such as end of life and times of critical care decisions. And we continue to keep the hospital secure and that all inter must be screened daily for signs and symptoms of COVID-19. Our current situation remains very fluid and requires careful ongoing monitoring. We all must continue to follow the COVID-19 safety protocols of social distancing, wearing a mask when out in public, washing hands frequently and staying within our previously established small family and, and social pods. With the forthcoming holidays, there will be those in our community who may disregard sound medical guidance, but careless behaviors can place us at potentially greater risk. If we all work together, we can overcome the current surge. Please be assured, the Marion Regional Medical Center and Arroyo Grande Community Hospital are prepared to adapt accordingly and safety care for our staff and patients. And this was from Sue Anderson. I want to thank Sue for that, because I asked her for that. And I know that Kevin Walters and Glenn Morris put together the, what is it, the respect and, Matt? Protect and respect. And so that's very important. And so we will go to reports from council members. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thanks for the report on Marion and all, you'll see why in just a moment here. On the 2nd of December, I did the Ben Hayes Show. On the 5th, I attended the opening at the Russell Park, which is a, a great job. And I, I was glad to see that they communicated with the police department to find out how to position certain things in the park that would give better observation for the passing law enforcement people. On the 9th, I did my annual qualifications at the, at the new range up at Los Flores Ranch. That is an outstanding facility. And if you haven't been up there, you should go. And if you don't have a vehicle that'll get you up there, call me and I'll take you up there. And I can even take a firearm that you can shoot if you, if you want. But it's an outstanding facility. It's state-of-the-art and the, the people that I worked with up there were, were, were great help. On the 10th, well, I guess I don't have to talk about that since we did the swear-in here. And on the 13th, I did my, another COVID test over at the fairgrounds. No symptoms or anything, I just did the test. And I've been getting a lot of calls. I got a call from one of the regular people, Gary Hall, gave me a call at my house and he had some nice things to say in that he, he is going to renew some things here with us in the near future. I also got a lot of telephone calls regarding the hospital priority process, regarding the, how we're going, how the hospital is going to prioritize patients in the event that they get any more of a rise in, in the peak of the pandemic. And I talked to a couple of people about that and, and it just, it's a private hospital. We don't have much to do with it and, and it's controlled to some degree perhaps by the state, but certainly not by the city council. And that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Soto.
On Saturday, December 5th, I attended the Russell Park Coffee and Donuts. Great job, Santa Maria Brecken Parks Department. I, it's, it was an amazing project and I, I loved seeing it come to fruition. On Monday, December 7th, I attended the airport district meeting representing the city along with city manager Jason Stillwell and Dr. Moats. On Friday, November, on Friday, December 11th, I attended the Latinx and Indigenous Migrant COVID-19 Response Task Force meeting. And that same evening, I was part of a panel where we talked about healthcare disparities, particularly in the city of Santa Maria and Santa Barbara County with the new collaborative group called Mi Gente Nuestra Salud. That's all.
Ms. Escobedo.
Madam Mayor, yeah, this December 5th, Saturday, I attended also the reopening of Russell Park. It was, it was a great job. I think it's, it was, it was good to see the community playing around, the kids just running all over the place. And also, I would like to share that I came back this weekend to check it out and I was happy to see kids playing around, families going and have some picnic, some, they were in the grass. So that was, that was pretty cool and I'm looking forward to see that more. I, I was really happy to, to witness this conversation with the mayor and one of the rangers about their complaint, that one of the complaints was the homeless, they were camping there. And it, and there was a good conversation, because basically, the idea is on this, on the park, because this is, this is not a city's park. This is the community's park and we have to be there. So I'm happy to see that people are actually attending, looking forward to see that more. Thank you.
I know, people just loved the park and the kids just loved the park. It was great. No, I told them that. It's, it's your park, you're the eyes and ears and, and like I said, I gave Mr. Posada's phone number. So I said, you have an issue here, a problem, you just call Mr. Posada and he'll handle it. December 2nd, I had my updated on the San Rick leaders call. On the 3rd of December, I presented Kathy Seamus for her retirement from the Santa Barbara Foundation. And that afternoon, I did the legislative briefing conference call. On December 4th, I had the mayors and city managers meeting and then the drive-through festival of lights and holiday market at the Fair Park. December 6th was the Russell Park opening. And then that afternoon, I read Good Night Strawberry Moon event for the United Way out at Rotary Centennial Park. On the 7th, I placed a wreath at the Freedom Monument and that was filmed. On the 10th, I attended the quarterly schools meeting, got an update from all the superintendents on December 11th, the state of the county of Santa Barbara. And I attended the United States Space Force's first birthday celebration at Vandenberg and that, that was just great. Because a year ago, when we were talking about the Space Force at Vandenberg, we were all there at the coast club and now we're, we're all outside and we were, they were, made sure that we were social distanced. December 12th, did the bell ringing in front of the Salvation Army. And on the 14th, let's see, and on the 15th this morning, did the Ben Hayes Show in Rotary. Any other comments from the council? And welcome back, Mr. Cordero. Welcome, Mr. Escobedo. And this meeting is adjourned.